So welcome aboard. Thank you. Yeah, I'll get going. I got a couple of comments to kick it off and have a little tiny little presentation and then Melissa's gonna kind of take it over from there. But well, this is a fast paced agenda, isn't it?
Yeah, that's just the.
Oh, that's just. Well, so we are working on, as you know, a housing action plan. And that will be something that will be coming to you in the next couple of months, I believe. We're on a really tight timeline with this funded by Washington Department of Commerce. So it's a grant. And it's entirely funded by this seventy five thousand dollar grant. But in order to cash out the entire grant, we have to have the housing action plan drafted and adopted by city council by June thirty. So we're on a tight timeline because you know, there's the drafting, there's the review, we have to send a copy of it. Well, I don't know, do we? Did you check on that? Do we have to send it to Commerce for the sixty day? Okay, good. That's cool. So that gives us a little bit of breathing room. But anyway, I just want to put it in the context of, you know, where we are with sort of trying to get this thing up and running and all the cities and counties that are planning under growth management are doing the same exercise. So it's not, they're not just picking on us, they're picking on everybody. And yeah, if you could pull up PowerPoint. So we're gonna kind of, so we're all of this and more, more than we're even talking about today, like next week, you're gonna see other aspects of this House Bill twelve twenty. That was adopted in twenty twenty one. Could you go to the next one, please? So it passed the legislature in April of twenty twenty one and it amended the Growth Management Act to strengthen the commitment of anyone who's planning under GMA to provide, and I should say, I keep using the word provide, and I need to change that word to plan and strategize or accommodate affordable housing. We're not gonna be building the housing. We're gonna be trying to create incentives and strategies to make sure other people build it. So that's what they did. They changed the housing element and growth management from encourage the availability of affordable housing to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population. And so, you know, they're strength, they're trying to strengthen the language to put the cities and counties more on the hook to really try to do something about that because as I'm sure you're aware, there's housing shortages throughout the state. Basically, we're supplying only about half the amount of housing that we project we'll be needing in the next twenty years. So, and this is just one little piece of HB twelve twenty. It is requiring all the communities under GMA to revise their zoning codes to allow for four types of housing. Do you have a chair in there? It's requiring us to amend our zoning codes so that these things are allowed and permanent supportive housing and transitional housing have to be allowed in any zone that allows dwelling units or hotels. And that's pretty much every zone in Yelm except for industrial and open space. So all residential zones, all the commercial zones are required to accommodate that kind of housing. And then there's indoor emergency housing and indoor emergency shelters and yet these must be allowed in any zone that allows hotels. So that's all of our commercial zones. And I do have definitions on hand. That's not the focus of today. It will be next week. So I mean, we can get into definitions. There's probably not the best use of our time right now, but you will see those definitions. Because one of the things we're going to be bringing to you are the proposed code amendments where we do make those changes to our code and our. Okay, next slide, please. So the other thing that HB twelve twenty requires is that we develop strategies to provide housing for these levels of income. And it's based on the area's median family income. So basically, that's the midpoint income of everything in our area. And the definition of moderate income or low income or very low income is based on what percentage of the is, what percentage of that is compared to the median family income. So extremely low income would be thirty percent or less of the median family income, which is eighty six thousand a year. So thirty percent of eighty six thousand. Trying to figure out strategies so that we can provide housing stock for people that only make thirty percent of that income. That's a very challenging challenge. You know, you're looking at, that's probably, well, a little less than thirty thousand dollar median family income. And what is the housing that someone making that income can afford? Okay, next slide. This was part of the housing needs assessment that Melissa actually worked on and her data showed that right now in Yelm, about forty two percent of Yelm's households are earning less than eighty percent of the area median income. Okay. Next. Okay, let me see here. So how do we do this? The legislation requires that, I'm gonna read it because if I try to just say it off the top of my head, I know I'm gonna screw it up. All comprehensive planned housing elements must include an inventory and analysis of existing and projected needs that identifies the number of housing units, including the number of housing units necessary to manage projected growth as provided by the Department of Commerce, including units for moderate, low, very low, and extremely low income households and of the other kinds of housing we listed earlier. Those numbers will be provided, as I said, by the Department of Commerce. And the way they will do it is, it's kind of like if you've been involved in the past when we do our population projections. What happens is Commerce provides those numbers as a big block to the county. And then the cities and the county meet and they basically allocate those numbers among the jurisdictions based on what they think they're gonna need to provide. So they just do it at the county level and then we all have to put our heads together and figure out like, you know, between Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey, Rainier, Tenino, Yelm. Of the, let's, I'm gonna just throw a number out, like of the one hundred low income houses that we need to provide over the next twenty years, how many of those are Yelm's responsibility to try to accommodate? And right now, we have been meeting with Thurston County to really work out a process. There are some tools that have been proposed, but there's, it's not carved in stone that every county has to do it the same way. So we're trying to see what might work best in Thurston County. Okay, thanks, Savannah. So this is an example, it's just an example, but there's a little model that Department of Commerce has developed and it's in their housing. I think it's in the housing section of their website. And this is an example of what it could look like in terms of what Yelm's responsibility will be. And this is a twenty year projection, more or less. For the total number of housing units that we need to provide and then the number of each of the types of housing units we've just been discussing. So anything like, you see the zero to thirty percent, that's the extremely low income. They're saying over the next, in this model, over the next approximate twenty years, we need to find a way to accommodate seventy six of those units. And then it goes right on down the line. And so based on those numbers, we need to develop strategies to see, see how we can make that happen. We don't have to build them, but we have to figure out ways or try to figure out ways that other people can, whether it's Habitat for Humanity, whether it's builders that are getting in certain kinds of incentives, like more density, what have you. We can talk, that's where we're gonna talk next, but if you could go to the last slide.
Is there any way to object to the numbers that we're asked to provide?
Well, yes.
In terms of lack of infrastructure or whatever.
Well, that would be a negotiation. The the base number, of course, this is the very first time this process has been done, but the number provided by Commerce, I'm sure that there's a process that the county and the cities in general think that those numbers are just totally off the mark. And we can develop or kind of like with population projections, if Commerce says Thurston County is gonna grow by fifty thousand in the next twenty years and the county says that's ridiculous, the county can go out and do its own study. And if it's compelling and they can show with evidence that Commerce was wrong, then we could get those numbers revised, I'm sure. At the county and city level, it's kind of a touchy negotiation process because, you know, say maybe Olympia feels like it's, and of course Olympia's homeless problem is obvious. As is Lacy's and, you know, they're the bigger cities and they're the magnet cities with services. But still, maybe they're gonna say that we're taking on too much of the burden of this type of household or whatever. And that's gonna be a negotiation between all the jurisdictions. Sure. So just based on the median family income, you sort of put the numbers together for this area, what the annual household income, and this is a simplified version too, because that number changes based on how many people are in the household. So this is a simplified snapshot. But we're looking at, and in that example of being able to provide seventy six new units by twenty twenty five for people who, of course, this is who currently made twenty five, eight, six, seven. I assume that will be adjusted for whatever that thirty percent is in twenty years. But if we had to do it today, we would need to do, have seventy six units for families making twenty five thousand eight hundred sixty seven. And then again, right on down the line. So that shows you the challenge and, you know, every community that looks at that challenge says, how are we gonna do that? It's really, as you know, Leonard Bauer in Olympia said, this is an aspirational goal, because we, nobody can make somebody go out and build a certain housing type. And we're not gonna build it. We may facilitate it in certain ways, but at least now we know what we're shooting for. So that's all I have for my piece of it. I just wanted to kind of set the table for what Melissa's gonna talk about because what we have to do in these housing action plans are develop goals and strategies for how we're gonna make this happen. Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, they have housing action plans that probably have, I don't know, two hundred of them. And we wanted, we went through all of theirs. But we wanted to do something appropriate to Yelm, a city of ten thousand that has, you know, Olympia, Lacey, they have someone whose job is housing, housing specialist who's doing that full time. We don't have currently the resources or any plans to have that position right now. So things related to what a housing specialist might do, we're probably not gonna be putting in our plan. We need to find different ways to, at least now for the time being, move forward with the housing action plan with the knowledge that it is also just like all of our other plans, kind of a living document. As Yelm grows, maybe we'll get more resources and bring staff in and change our direction. But this is for where we are right now.
I have a question.
Yes.
For today, are we going, will we have as part of our information to work with today, if we're doing strategies, will we see some of the conclusions or some of the information coming from the housing time analysis?
The housing needs assessment? We did not bring it, but we do have it. I think we've even posted it.
So were we supposed to do that as pre-reading? I didn't know.
Um, okay. Not really for this, however, I mean, I think that's, I think we could send that along. It's not really, it's a technical document. It's not a policy document. That's why it didn't come before you. But, but yeah.
What we have so far, yeah, I mean, how many very low income or extremely low income housing?
The stock, like what is our current stock? Yeah, Melissa might know that better off the top of her head. I don't.
Not off the top of my head, but I have my laptop and that's trustee. So I mean, where are they? I mean, I know about the ones on Cullen, but I was told the other day that of all those units that are out there, only seven are being used. There's a whole bunch that are very young. So there may be a situation like that that we could.
Yeah, on existing stock, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. How many units are there there now?
I don't know, but I was told that there are only seven that are actually.
What are they offering for rent? Do you know, is it in that six hundred and forty seven a month?
No, I know it's very, very low income, single bedroom and elderly that are, I was there. I don't know why. I was curious as to why there's some of these.
Yep, probably answer to the company or individuals that managed all of them.
Yeah. And are they managing on the, to reduce the occupancy so that they can do something else? Or is it, you know, that's, that's just another aspect to what I was thinking of looking at.
Yeah, and I, of course, am too new to really know like where all of the different places are around town. I'm still kind of getting up to speed on that, but so I don't have an answer to that question. I do know that we do have right now, I think it's twenty eight unit subdivision proposed by Habitat for Humanity, which is going to be proposing. I thought it was
right at Cullen.
Thirty, between thirty and eighty percent? Do you recall?
No, but they're like twenty two units.
Twenty two, okay. So we do have some that are being proposed. I can't remember now exactly which category of income they're shooting for.
Yeah, diagonally across the street from, or across the intersection from this one that.
Yeah, you see, you look at extremely low. There's nothing you can construct extremely low unless you're constructing a multi-unit apartment type dwelling. You can't build a house that you can get a mortgage on for six hundred and forty seven a month. You probably can't even get the lot for six hundred and forty seven dollars a month. So then you're talking rental, not owning.
But of small apartments or subsidized apartments.
Yeah, that's, that'd be the only thing you'd have. At the very, even very low, you're, there's a borderline there where I doubt you're looking at, you move into your house on three acres for that.
Well, that's why I thought it, it'd be helpful to me to know our current.
Availability.
Yeah. And where we are, where the place is are, because I had heard that we need to make sure that these are the affordable housing that are close to transit and close to retail. And that's when you look at Yelm.
Yeah. Do you have figures on the rent in all of these complexes anywhere? Do we know what they're, I mean, you can go knock on their door and find out. I'm not talking about individual houses, but I'm talking about the apartment units that are being built here, what their rent is a month. Do we know that? It is available or? Yeah, seventeen hundred to about two thousand. That's, so they're not.
Yeah.
They're not. What you're talking about is there's nothing for very low or extremely low anywhere in Yelm and.
Behind the Safeway, it's subsidized.
Yeah, right.
So that, we wouldn't be paying the full.
Right. Well, I mean, I think you were asking about the stuff that's being constructed like. Yeah, I was looking at what they're building that they're like, those are probably twenty five hundred.
Yeah, none of those are affordable. I mean, in that definition, none of them are affordable.
And I realize we're looking at the future, but you know, you're thinking, where are we now? It looks like we're not any, we probably aren't even reaching anybody that's in the very low or extremely low availability anywhere in Yelm right now, I would guess, without being subsidized by someone. Subsidized housing, which is a strategy. It's one. The Habitat for Humanity, I believe, was gonna reach some of those. I guess the seventeen hundred dollar a month apartment will reach the low as currently described.
For Habitat for Humanity, a hundred thousand dollar loan, it would probably be about four hundred and seventeen dollars a month mortgage. The reason I came with that, I worked for Habitat for Humanity for seventeen years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's zero interest on a twenty year loan.
Right.
So two hundred and forty payment. So that kind of, that's encouraging.
So did you have any, then you wanted to say, Melissa, or? Yeah.
So looking back, just to kind of give you a figure, I sent the housing needs analysis to Maryam. It's getting coordinated so it can be up on the screen. But if you wanted to take a look at the screen until then, so this is a graph of, granted, it's twenty twenty one because it's backdated to what's available in the census and other data. But essentially, the gray bars are the number of renter households, just households in, in Yelm. And the green is the actual available portable housing that they would be able to get into. And so you can clearly see that the lower incomes, there's a disparity of available units versus the amount of households that are actually in the city. So this is not new information. We definitely have incorporated this into the housing needs analysis and therefore also into the draft goals and policies that we're considering today. And one of the, just as a side note, one of the gaps that we are suggesting is a transit gap because the housing in Yelm is, is not only a consideration for affordability, but as you were saying, it's a transportation and accessibility issue. So some of those goals align with, you know, where are we placing that housing? So you'll, you'll kind of see that in the, in the documents.
Page, page and some?
I'm thirty three.
Okay, wait, that's thirty three there, Marilyn. Saw forty flash by. You're gonna make me dizzy.
Yeah, I see. Grab it fast. There's thirty one.
On the document, yeah, on the document, it says twenty eight. Yeah, well, and it's funny because when you, when you create the document, you know, it doesn't include the title and the table of contents and all of that, but it's figure thirty two, I believe. Yeah, figure thirty two. So that might be helpful. There you go. So yeah, so this is the renter one. As you, as I said earlier, you can kind of see the disparity for really any of the households that are less than fifty thousand. But what we kind of noticed was there is, it's like a defining line of like about sixty five, sixty five K a year for the household that is kind of like the, this is where it kind of goes south. If you scroll down to figure thirty three, you can see that the disparity in the, the owner households. So these are houses that are not obviously being rented. Yeah, feel free to look at that. But as you can see, we have kind of the same disparity where under fifty thousand really doesn't have a lot of units available for the households that need them. Most, granted, most of these households that are below fifty thousand typically rent. So a lot of that is displaced to the renter graph. So it's not an exact science, but this kind of gives a good overall look at where we were or where the city of Yelm was in twenty twenty one. And in regard to projections and where we are now, can you scroll down to table ten? It's the next one. So this gives you a general understanding of where, where the city was in twenty twenty one and what their projections looked like in twenty forty five. There is a difference in the amount that Gary showed you versus the one that we're suggesting. I believe it's because there was no percentage change for the for the city spreadsheet that you presented, Gary. I think, I think not having.
Percentage?
The, you know how that spreadsheet has the columns where you're supposed to have like whatever percentage?
Oh, you mean the example thing I did? Yeah, no, that was just a snapshot. I didn't, I'm not sure it was even completely accurately filled in, but it was close enough to get.
Yeah, I think that it's closer to what, what is current now. So I think that thirty five hundred is where you're sitting right now versus the twenty twenty one estimates, which was about three thousand two hundred and sixty four total housing units. So how we get, this might be easier, how we get to this number, the five thousand four hundred and eighty six, is we take the population that's projected and that's from OFM and we double checked it with Thurston County's records as well. And then we divide it by the people per household. This is the twenty twenty one standards per household. This is what essentially the census and all of the data has said that there's about three point two two people per household. And so that gets us to about eight thousand two hundred and forty households that would be in the city of Yelm in twenty forty five. And there is about a five percent healthy vacancy rate that you want. So that just means that there's units, either rental or ownership units that aren't being utilized. They're either under construction or being renovated or just sitting there. But basically that allows for a healthy market rate. So we accounted for that. And so that leaves about a total housing unit necessary of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. Now, what we did, obviously, there's already existing housing units. This doesn't take into account ones that are going to be decommissioned through, you know, whatever means, natural or not. But that means that there's about a five thousand four hundred and eighty six unit difference of what you'll need in twenty forty five versus what you have now. It's a little bit different. Now we're clearly close, closer to about thirty five hundred units, but that's pretty much what you're looking at. This is just a general understanding. It's trying to just kind of give that conveyance of, hey, this is probably what the population is going to look like. You know, people really like Yelm and especially with JBL, I'm really close. And the rural aspect, a lot of people have kind of steeped and seen flocking towards here, especially because it's more affordable than cities like Olympia and now getting Lacey. So that's just a good idea to keep in mind. And you can keep that up if you want. But that leads us into our discussion. So in front of you, you have two pieces of paper. One said Yelm strategies and actions on the top. And it has some gaps that are, have been identified. You don't have to.
Melissa, I just want to make one point. That rate there is about, I think that would be about two hundred and fifty units a year that we need. And I think we're supplying about a hundred.
Yeah.
We've had two hundred multifamily last year. Yeah, two hundred multifamily and ninety nine single family last year. So three hundred.
And one thing to really understand too is that because of Yelm's exponential growth rate as of, you know, twenty twenty one and just up until this point, because I can't say for the future right now, that's what the projections are based off of. So the likelihood is that it may slow, especially as, you know, if development doesn't come in, things like that. So it may not get to that point. It may not get to the twenty five, but we still have to accommodate for something. We have to essentially say, hey, here's the goals and policies that we're going to institute and kind of follow. And what's gonna happen is as the city goes and updates their development regularly. Here's the goals and policies that we're going to institute and kind of follow, and what's going to happen is as the city goes and updates their development regulations, they're just going to keep them in the back of their mind and say, hey. You know, this is something that we should take into consideration. So really, it's a, it's a guidance. It's just saying that these are things that the city either wants to do or um. As you can kind of see on the other page. There's already housing goals in the comprehensive plan that kind of are similar to it, so we're not, you know, changing everything, we're not updating development regulations, we're not doing anything like that. It's really just getting to the nitty gritty of where does the city want to see its housing and how can we accommodate? Uh, you know, these numbers essentially. So um, the first one uh, with all of the gaps is basically the suggested policies, so not the goals, just the policies. That and policies are just strategies, essentially. There are just ways of thinking of what the city could do. Or what potential partnerships could do to really assist getting more development into the city. Um, so the gaps that are uh, that we. The gaps that need to be addressed essentially that we found are affordability, supply, anti-displacement, transit. Middle housing, which is variety, um, and accessibility, which is really supportive housing. The first three that I mentioned, it's a little out of order on your paper. Um, affordability, supply and anti-displacement, those are required gaps to um, essentially fill or do something towards. Um, by the Department of Commerce. So we have to have strategies that kind of look at or um, help to accommodate those gaps.
Yeah, define anti-displacement.
Anti-displacement is the, essentially, when you think about um. New development coming in, you don't want to push lower income or older development or anything out. So anti-displacement is really a thought process of going, okay, I've got this luxury apartment coming in. And I've got this low income apartment right next to it. Is it going to push the low income rent up because now it's next to luxury? Or is it going to cause people not to want to stay there? Or, you know, it's it's basically just thinking of like, is this going to cause people to have to move away, rent to increase? Anything like that. Um, okay, so I did not number the next page, the goals. Um, and the reason why is because our discussion today is really going to um, kind of. Find those values is the way that I'm going to say that. Essentially, um. How we look at and discuss the different goals will kind of go, they'll set the order for the plan. If that makes sense.
You're talking about a priority?
Yes, thank you. It was on the tip of my tongue and I just, I was missing it. Um.
So page, page two is just a reorganization of page one under the goals.
Exactly. Color coded, thank you, Gary. Um, it's been color coded, it's the same exact policies, it's just addition of the goals and um, the same same color coding as before. The only difference is it does not say what the, what gaps it um, addresses. So what I would like to do and um. I think this is just the easiest way is go by goal and then list and kind of review the policies for each goal and then have a discussion. Um. Gary or Maryam, do you have any comments in? In regard to um. That thought like.
Yeah, no, I mean, all I would say is, you know. Again, compared to like Olympia or some of the other ones, I call this kind of like a housing action plan light.
Yeah.
There are lots of other goals out there, so if you, there's something that you don't see here that you would like to see, um, of course, we would. Entertain, you know, how to get that in there. Obviously, we don't want to present anything that the planning commission or the council universally um. Would reject, and really, that's the thing, we want, when we bring in the housing action plan, we want to know kind of where your thinking is about these goals, because they're the basically the backbone of the housing action plan. And the better we we work it out today, the quicker we can actually get the plan adopted.
Yeah, so thank you so much, Gary. Um, yeah, as he said, it's it's a draft. Uh, this is not set in stone, this is um, open for discussion, which is why we're having a roundtable right now. Um, to say, you know, what is your opinion? What? What do you think? Do you think it should be a higher policy, a different goal? Do you not like it at all? Do you love it? Um, it's it's your time to essentially. Um, ensure your voice is heard. So. The first goal on the list is to encourage a variety of housing types, densities and a range of affordable housing. And this goal is similar to housing goal um, in the current comp plan. Um, and so I can either, whatever your preference is, I can either. Like list out all the policies and explain them, um, or I can let you read them, and if you have questions, um, bring it up. I don't know if anybody has a preference. I will, to save my board. Unless you were going to say something.
So these goals that are listed here are almost the same as the ones that we have today in our conference decline, or are they brand new or?
They, so not all of the goals are similar. Um. The ones that have the note next to them, the they're similar to either goals or policies that are in the current comp plan. And there is a good strategy to support um, anything that's currently a goal. Um, because it's, it's, we know that it's where the city's vision is. Granted, the comp plan is from two thousand seventeen, and so visions change, so we want to make sure that if this is a a goal that the city wants, that. Um, you know, we're keeping it alive essentially, and that's what, that's what essentially we're doing. We're keeping the the goals and the vision alive, but really showing that we can move forward with um, getting housing into Yelm. Um. Through development and partnerships and and things like that.
Well, to. My thoughts based on. What I just saw, you know, the charts that you showed, is that we're not having any difficulty getting. Uh, new housing and the housing in for the people that have. Above fifty thousand, you said sixty five is really the cutoff. And so we're, we seem to be doing the right things for the moderate to higher income people. And so really what we're missing is a strategy or elevating the priority. For the lower and extremely. What are those categories? The the three lower categories?
Very low and extremely.
Extremely low. And um. It's just, uh, I. We, many of these things are going to address all the regular higher.
Do we know how many? Of the lower, extremely low are living in Yelm now somewhere, but we don't know where they are.
We don't.
Or, I mean. See, I look at two problems you have, if I'm making. Less than twenty five thousand dollars a year, I'm probably not living in Yelm, I'm living in Lacey or someplace where I have more access to get things. Because I can't even afford to walk to the station. That's less than minimum wage, and that's another thing that concerns me is they're calculating, you think our calculation is the low bottom. Would be a single person drawing minimum wage, forty hours a week, not drawing less than minimum wage.
In the county.
And so I don't know.
You know, the folks that we see that come in for Christmas in the park?
Oh, yeah.
They come in to the three hot dog. Their kids don't have shoes.
Those are living offline though sometimes, too. They will continue to do that. They're not going to move to Yelm.
They're not going to move to our, our. To where. We need to consider that we really have a population that's just outside the pretty limits.
I don't think we can address it, though. We have to look at only the urban growth, right?
Um, for.
Sorry, though, I. No, not with urban growth, it's really the, it's anything in the city limits that.
Um, even that's even less.
So. So even in this first, of course, none of these is meant to work alone. I mean, this is like a whole suite of strategies, you know, that we're coming up with. But for example, allowing accessory dwelling units in all residential areas, and of course, coming up with the uh. Uh, flexible permitting uh, to allow that is something that I think is some, very much targeted to low income. Because those will be units that are small accessory structures to a primary residence that are typically, they're no more than eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, so um, same with um. You know, allowing more um, infill and and residential zones and single room occupancy. Um, so I do think that these are, you're right, we're, we have no problem building the market rate, but that, we're not really facilitating that as much as the economy is right now.
I think I was something in the, I mean, when you look at what we've got here and now that. It's been enlightening with the planning commission, it's. We've been doing the right things to encourage development. And the development and the developers who are coming in are those that are doing the hiring. Are the medium to high. So I think that. We have used all of these to encourage. A lot more development than you see in, say, right here. Are some, some of the other places that have less coordinated commerce and development. And infrastructure. Well, I think, I think it's, it's hard for me to go through line by line and to figure out which ones that we really want to emphasize. But what occurs to me is that. If we had someone or a strategy that was strictly focused on the, the extreme low, medium. The last three categories, and somebody was. Asked with that strategy. Of coordinating with habitat, of coordinating with the affordable housing groups that that actually build affordable housing. If we had. At least one goal that said we need a. I know you guys are so busy already in the regular planning group, but if we had someone whose focus was strictly how to get affordable housing.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's kind of what I mentioned earlier, that we do not foresee hiring a a housing person at this time, we're just not.
You're too small.
Um, and, you know, this here, by the way, is not like, we're actually proposing it, all of these out of. A list that's probably four times larger than that. And again, um, I don't think any one of them is a silver bullet, but I do think that there are lots of different approaches we can take, and I don't think that we have taken all these approaches over the last ten years, even though I haven't been here, I mean, just looking at our code. I can tell a lot of these things aren't in the code. Um, even things like allowing density bonuses for end zones, if you build more and you guarantee that you're going to make a certain number of them affordable, then we'll let you have a little bit more density here to make it worth your while. Um, transit, if, you know, we want to enhance transit opportunities in the city. Right now, basically goes in and I guess just as a little loop, it goes right back out. Um, so work with inner city transit to try to increase opportunities for transit, and then, as you mentioned, uh, multi-family that are near transit. Look at reducing some of our parking requirements, which reduces the cost and also increases the amount of space available to build housing. And just start looking at, you know, it's going to be situational based on where they are and, you know, what programs are available and. What, who it is that we're working with, whether it's a, you know, partnering with Habitat or other entities that specialize in this. So coming up with goals and policies that facilitate them being able to do what they want to do, and, you know, if by the time we get to twenty thousand, maybe we will have a housing coordinator.
I, I don't know that we can afford one, but. I. I have a question, if we're to prioritize these. If I were to take the pink one, and prioritize it as the top, I might address the low income, but I'd not address. All the rest of the things that we needed to continue to. I'm, I'm concerned about. How do we um? How do we meet your objective of of prioritizing?
I think. I think that I should clarify something. So with these goals and policy suggestions, it's obviously not convenient, right? Um, but what it does is, as I was kind of saying earlier, when. Maryam or uh, any planner or Gary or any of the planning staff go to update the development regulations, or they think, oh, hey. Um, I really want to hire a, and now we have the funding, hire a housing coordinator or whatever. This will support them in getting those actions more achieved. It's not going to say yes or no, it's not, you know, that's really planning commission, the city council, getting those things actually, um, you know, into the code. This is just a guidance to say, we should really think about low income, and here's the numbers, and I did put up the numbers from twenty twenty one on the screen. Um. Um, but it's really um. It's really meant to to kind of shape how we're thinking when, when the city updates those regulations and really any other plans for the most part. Um.
So like all of us. All of us need to have that as our. New way of looking at. The planning. We need to really take the low income in consideration a lot more. We don't have one person who's designated to do it, we all need to do it.
Yeah, and and so a lot, I think you'll see, I don't know if you read all of the policies, but a lot of them have to do with low income, and that's because. Low income, moderate, like the lower gap that that we really identified. Um, because when we were going through and and Gary's right, we narrowed the list from like four hundred um, different goals and policies and looked at, you know, what? What does the city need and where do they want to be? We saw that there is a, there is a genuine need for special housing, which is like seniors, um. Seniors, low income, um, different, you know, uh. Essentially places that uh, can be accessible to individuals with disabilities, things like that, um, but also. Low income, um, extremely low income, those kind of houses, um, just units in general. So we definitely took that into consideration when we, when we um, built this, we can also um. Look at the. Language that is used in the different policies and and potentially look at, you know, how we can shape that to be more versatile towards. Actual low income or, you know, maybe say, oh, well, we want it to kind of go towards less than fifty thousand households who make less than fifty thousand or something like that versus specifically saying low income. The reason why we typically shy away from that is because as these documents age, that that changes, you know, fifty thousand could be the new twenty thousand, and so we definitely don't want to. We don't want to put language in there that, um, you know, is going to hurt the city in the long run. We want to make sure that it's broad enough that, um, when. Maryam in seven years looks at it, and for some reason it hasn't been updated or anything like that. Um. But you know what I mean? Um. A planner looks at it in seven years, and maybe they, you know, they weren't here, and they're going to kind of understand what they need to consider. So. I like your comment, though.
Yeah, come, I'm going to get back to work, but, no, thank you for letting me interject. So, uh, just keep in mind, anything you guys want to send to council. I'm going to look at that through the lens of a basic economics textbook. So keep that in mind, because there's a lot of things that the state passes that do not meet basic economics. You know, it's crazy, but so, yeah, anything you guys send up to us, please be prepared for that, as I'm just giving you, that's how you sell to me. If you want to sell me on something.
Well, you're at it. Does the city let people know that if they're below a certain income? And say, these are people that say retired from the military nineteen seventy five, thirty six? And they happen to own their house, but they're paying property tax. Do you know that they can be exempt from paying property tax? Are you advertising that to the people? Because that's going to help them out. That was passed three years ago, and it should have been notified, people should have been.
Doesn't the assessor put that in? No.
No.
Assessor doesn't want to know. Assessor doesn't want to know.
He doesn't want you to know that. I just sent
He has it under his head across my desk.
Sent my sister down and gave her all the paperwork. To start off with, the first thing she went in because her income was twenty seven thousand a year for social security. She went down to H and R block and they said, you don't need to file income tax. One of the requirements to get exempt from paying property tax is you must have a ten forty. Now here are the people or the experts got their head up a certain portion of the body. Okay, so those things and it helps the city lets people know that this is an option for those people. And it's about forty five thousand a year. That if your gross income for the household is that, you can get exempt. Or reduced, you get a reduced or it depends. It, it depends on what it, and if you're a disabled veteran, it's exempt. Okay, so those are things, but.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of ideas that are good, you know, like the density and all that that can be used that, you know, makes sense. Money wise, so that's, that's, you know, my prediction. Yeah, we're getting the, you know, may is putting in a new leader board, so you should put that on there.
I think another thing that, you know, there's a big pressure now on homes, you know, and small home houses for homeless and everything else. The state budget is talking about billions in money for this. Some of this money could trickle down to Yelm. Where when you're getting a developer, you're also providing something for people that have zero income, but you're providing some type of housing or availability and you're motivating the developer to be considering this as part of the development, because I think there's gonna be pressure to all of the municipalities. I'm listening to the governor saying he wants twelve million to address the homeless or billion to address the homeless problem. There could be money that would trickle down to the city. And also trickle down to developers if they address that problem. And that, of course, we don't know what that's going to be, but that's also something we might throw into the mix if you're addressing that too.
There are people who think their median income, their medium income. And I remember I worked with a lady, she said, we're medium income. And she told me how much they earned. She wouldn't even qualify for a habitat house. She was that low. But they think, and so when you advertise it, how, how do you let somebody know yours didn't that property level?
Yeah, that's the other thing that I'm glad you brought that up. Habitat for Humanity has a minimum qualification and it may that twenty five thousand may not meet them getting into a habitat house.
Right now, if you wanted to look at, and this is from Department of Commerce. A family of three, two hundred percent of median income. In other words, so combined doesn't have is forty nine thousand. And those are right here in this. Two hundred percent of that. So in other words, divide that number by half. Are there a family of two? Thirty nine thousand four hundred.
That's, I got something I wanted to bottom minimum that you guys will be able to get into a house, even being considered for.
To, to, I'm, I'm not sure I'm on the right track here or not, but talking about, you know, trying to get a housing person in, you know, the low income, stuff like that. I think I brought it up during the last meeting about whether or not anybody's talking to, I can't remember what it's taught, that like the South Sound Coalition or something from that's based out of Lakewood that deals with the local communities, JBLM stuff. And one of their big focuses is trying to ensure that there's the, the low income, the low, low income for, you know, a lot of the military service members, things like that. And from what I had read previously, Mayor DePinto, I think is supposed to be on the board, one of the board members of that, but I believe regarding the, the housing position that everybody's talking about for Yelm is that potentially some of that information could come from that organization if there were some crosstalk and that, you know, they could potentially feed some information because that's exactly what they're working on. So just, just as a thought.
I think, I think it's the same organization, but I'm not positive because I wasn't in the meeting, but somebody met with Cody last week or the week before who was looking at, and this is really promising in terms of, you know, maybe getting a long way toward whatever goals we come up with. And it is some organization affiliated with JBLM that's interested in acquiring a minimum of forty acres in the city to develop mil- housing for military. It's a complicated thing because military folks get a housing allowance. So I don't know how that works relative to income. But the thought was that they would develop units for military that would be considered low income. And that at some point those units would transition into veterans as, as, and I don't know how they have that transition planned. And then if they didn't have the demand for all of the units to be built by veterans, then civilians could, could live there. And they would go, they're planning it as a mixed use development that will have commercial options. But, but I do want to say
It's very, very well with
Pink, yeah.
Goal, is it, you can leverage all the various different organizations that are already trying to accomplish this.
Sure, no, I mean, we definitely
Get a channel to
We definitely want to partner, partner with willing
And then have them come up with proposals for how to do this.
Well, that's certainly one thing we want to do, but I just want to say, cause I do want to get back on track on looking at these, because we want to make sure that we give you something that is, you know, gonna meet the whatever test. But one thing I want to say is we may have our own individual priorities, but you don't have to prioritize these at all. These are all, now, once we, if we, let's say we adopted this list, we may prioritize some things just because like doing an accessory dwelling unit code is something we can do really quickly. As opposed to some of the other things that are longer term strategies. So there'll be, there'll be strategies from the standpoint of what's the low hanging fruit? And maybe some of them will be like, well, this one's really important, even though it's not low hanging fruit, we gotta work on this. But as far as putting these in any kind of order, just because it's three point one or three point two, they're, these are all equal on this page.
One of the things I noticed, and it was a big stumbling block in Olympia was what it costs just the fees by the city could put housing in. I mean, I built my house many years ago and I remember my permit was two hundred and eighty three dollars. And I walked in, we were doing a house in Olympia. Just a little twelve hundred square foot house or eleven hundred. And the city of Olympia said, well, if you pay it, I said, ready to write my check and just do it. And they said, that'd be twenty thousand dollars. What do you think is a big stumbling block for putting in affordable housing? The cost just to get the, reduce the cost to allow low and moderate income.
And that's one thing they've done. Maybe I, it's either they've eliminated fifty percent or maybe it's entirely the impact fees for low income. And then last week there was an article and we've got this in here on ours too. A lot has reduced its sewer hookup fees by fifty percent, which is several thousand dollars. And so we're looking at that too and goal to our, our, the second, the yellow goal, discuss lower hookup fees and other incentives for low income housing.
And that does affect moving into providing those people like Habitat for Humanity, there's more than one organization that will allow them to be able to come in and do this.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's one of the strategy. We, we talked about, you know, priorities in terms of our own pet, pet strategies. That's one of mine. You know, it, it, lower the, you know, in, in the initial fees.
Yeah.
Create more density, be creative with transit. Those are the things that I'm kind of looking at myself.
Get you in the door with that, you know, it what, and that, I looked at houses. I was looking at, you know, houses going to cost the homeowner a hundred thousand dollars, but forty thousand dollars of it was all impact fees.
I, I'm trying to get my head around all of this that we're discussing here, but what is it actually that we're trying to accomplish? From what you've given us here.
Today? Yeah, just to show you what strategies we are looking at, make sure that they look like stuff that is in the ballpark of something you would support as going into a housing action plan. When we did this, again, like I said, one of the things that we were looking at, I mean, even though there are some, you know, like the councilman was saying, there may be some that he might not support, but because there are some subsidy type things in here in terms of reducing connection fees and things like that. I mean, that comes at a loss to the city. You know, but it's an incentive for the housing, but most of these that we put in here, we tried to minimize what would have an economic impact on the city. And by that, I mean, things like hiring a housing coordinator, providing certain, you know, services or, and it's not that we don't want to provide them, but we don't have the resources and the funds to do that. So what we have here is more like, let's partner with people who do this stuff. That's what the pink's all about. Let's facilitate making that happen. We could do some things that are one-time efforts like putting up, we've talked about on the city's website. Having a housing page where we can put up links, connections to in organizations or information about programs that could be beneficial to people looking for housing, that kind of stuff.
Well, I don't see anything on here that I overly object to. I, I think you guys have done an excellent job in, in coordinating the, the goals and policies and the, of the gaps. I think that's, I, I really like that color coded thing. That really impressed me. So if, if, if the commissioners don't mind, what, what do you want us to just agree with me that this is this is good and, and continue doing what you're doing? Or is that what you'd like for us to?
Well, I mean, I, I guess, yeah, but if you had any strong objections, we would want to know about that. Secondly, maybe just like marinate with it, you know, look it over a few times and like see if any other thoughts come up. So that when we do present it to you, you're not taking, you know, we don't want to hit you by surprise with this information.
Well, I wouldn't mind taking a little more time on my own to review some of this in more depth. You know, just to look at it, but I, just glancing over all of the points that you made, I, I really don't have any overt objections to any of this stuff.
No, I think, well, what kind of generated this was when we got blindsided on the plan development. Plans that were going on, which appeared not to be in line, which was the original plan twenty years ago was, is what would be a planned community development. And we felt like we'd been kind of left out of the ballpark on that. And then another part of that that was a concern when originally they were doing that, they had certain requirements if you want to be in that area, which would when the city gave that, I don't know how many acres that is, sixteen hundred acres, that's more than that probably. Tohoma, yeah. Tohoma, the whole plan was that this would be all a plan that would have certain constraints and requirements in it. One of the things that I didn't see in at least the initial talking was, is there any pressure for ultra-low cost, cost housing in that area? Now initially you'd say, no, that wouldn't do any good because there wouldn't be any bus transportation. But part of our plan was there would be bus transportation through there. There would be people that go to bus stops. There would be schools there, there'd be different things built. And that stirred this whole thing when we got blindsided in the last meeting saying, gee, we don't know anything about any of this going on. You've got a committee that's going to give their proposal, what they're going to do and what they're going to develop. We don't know anything about it. And so I think we're kind of at that point that we need to be educated, but having input before that is suddenly signed off and approved. And making sure it's following what we understood, the planning commission agreed upon many years ago and also the city council.
I was gonna bring this up at our next meeting, but since you brought it up now, might as well bring it up now. I suspect that this is not going to occur again, that we're going to continue to have the capability, ability to review any of these major changes that affect the comprehensive plan, because that's our, so that's the last thing that we have available to us as a planning commissioner is to be either recommend or object to what's going on with the planning for the comprehensive plan.
Right. Well, the thing about Tohoma Terra was weird, odd, well, two things. One, it didn't have an affordable, low income component to it, but two, that particular process was set up, it's the only one, I think, in terms of development processes where the planning commission actually did not have a recommendation role. It's set up to go through the hearings examiner and then to the city council, but there was something in there which did not occur. And that was that every five years, the planning commission should just be given an update of what's going on with it. But, but you would not have, and that's that particular role, the way it's set up in code, you would not have a role in making a recommendation, because it has to go to the hearings examiner. Like, almost like a subdivision. So that's why, I mean, I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding. I still think you're right that it's been great every five years. They should have been, you know, you should have been getting an update. So that's why we, you know, when we, we got this proposal, started looking back through this twenty-three-year-old hearings examiner decision, and it said every five years thou shall. So that's why we brought it to you, just to let you know what's going on.
Actually, it probably was not a hearing examiner twenty-three years ago.
It was actually.
Is that when they first started it? Cause it didn't seem to me initially, we were making those approvals when I was first on the planning commission.
Yeah, well, so for, well, typically
I'm not sure when the planning commissioner came on board date wise.
Yeah, so typically the way it works, they, they call it a quasi, anything that's quote quasi judicial. Or you have somebody who's kind of acting like a judge, that goes to a hearing examiner. Land subdivisions or quasi judicial, anything that's legislative, like a plan update. That goes through you guys. And so that's the difference. So you, you definitely, like you're going to be seeing a lot here in the near future. We're doing a joint plan in the first in county. We're updating our comprehensive plan. We're doing our habitat conservation plan. We're doing our housing action plan. All that stuff goes through you guys.
All right.
So.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up again. So as, as far as what's going on today, I don't think that there's any objection with what you've done. And continue doing this and using that advice and as to what's, you know, what the continued implementation of these plans goes forward.
I want to ask you about just one of these, okay? Because it's usually like the most controversial, it seems to me. And that is policy in blue, policy three, four, expand the multifamily tax exemption. And that is something that a lot of times you hear from people in the community, oh, you're just giving things away to the developers. Because what you do is you typically, is it, is it usually like a ten-year period, Melissa? You basically suspend the tax lot burden to the developer for a period of ten years to incentivize them developing affordable housing. Of course, with guarantees that it will be, I mean, it's affordable housing. So the city's gonna forego a tax. I have a feeling the councilman might not like that idea from based on what he said, but, but it is a standard tool that's used. That is probably one of the more, would you say, Melissa, one of the more used tools?
It's, yeah, it's a pretty standard tool throughout most jurisdictions. It's the, the one consideration is, is really that you lose that tax. But you get low income and, and usually there's a really nice facility spectrum because they know that you know, they have to buy by the MFT and there are
They also are exempt taxes, but that's your job to convince the council and you see the council's not one person. And it's a majority vote, so you can say, I'm not for that. Skill passes, so I think you guys can sell it. You could sell it.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem.
That's, that part of good business.
Yeah.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
You gotta do it, you gotta do something for an incentive where you're not gonna get what we're gonna need in particularly low housing.
If I may, I think I spoke a little bit in our last meeting about this. I'm out there with the developers doing these inspections, working with the apartments. We have five apartment complexes right now.
Right.
And what I'm finding is the people who have the least want to give the most. When you have these giant, giant multimillion dollar companies, they're not interested in low income housing. They're interested in it all, anything as much as possible. But I spoke to one developer in particular that said they had a tax more for him for twelve years in Pierce County and twenty-five percent of their apartment complex was low income. And if we can give those incentives, kind of like Gary was speaking of, of the impact fees, things like that. Those people that don't have those million dollar pockets can actually do that. It becomes possible for them to develop low income housing and they're the ones that want to do it.
With the, the organizations too, like the JBLM, South Sound, I don't know the name of the group that you were talking about that's associated with JBLM, but those are the things that we really need to get a real connection to, you know, and have communication with, with Habitat. Whoever did the, the affordable housing apartment complex right behind Safeway. They came in on some type of a deal that a councilman, a councilman They came in on some type of a deal that a councilman, um, a council member. Uh orchestrated that back when.
That's a long time ago.
Cause he hasn't been a councilman.
Well, I called Prairie Run Apartments today, cause I'm working with them on some work that had happened, and I believe they have low income units. And if you listen to their voicemail, it says if you're looking for a two to three bedroom apartment, the waitlist is five to seven years.
Then we need to do something about that. Because there's a lot of people.
Right now, military, that's one of the big problems is housing. My next door. There was a house that is owned by two dentists. And it was somebody from their church. transferred in here in the Air Force, could not find housing. In the South Sound area. With the amount of money that he got for the housing allowance. And it, he was there for pretty close to seven months when until he could find a place to live in.
Your lower enlisted grades are the ones that are severely hurt. Your higher enlisted, your officers. Their housing allowance is enough and their income is enough that they happily move into Yelm and. And are purchasing the houses, but you, you can have. Young E ones and E twos that still have a family of three and they're almost on a poverty level even in the military. And that's something we probably have to look at reaching out to 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 touch those families that need a place.
I owe you for more information on that, because he has had that conversation and we were actually looking at the, you know, the map, uh, the map. To see where could we find forty acres, um, that it's a, to me, it's an exciting opportunity. You know, be a real shot in the arm as far as these goals go.
Well, the military's gotten away from running their housing. I guess you saw the big lawsuits that are going on with mold and everything else. Cause I was the director of facilities for the Military Academy, so I'm very familiar with military housing. But they've gotten away from that because of the fact that it's so difficult to maintain housing. And so they're turning it over to contractors. Around the housing and actually build the housing and then take the money, the housing allowance to operate it. Apparently JBLM got into a big problem with that, because you're going out to the low bid contractor and. It didn't work out too well and there's all kinds of lawsuits now over the. Hazardous mold and quarters, because it wasn't anymore the military. If you're the facilities engineer and you're lieutenant colonel and the general's gonna chop your head off, if you have mold, you have an interest in mold. If you're a contractor, you're not worried. That's been unfortunate.
Five years that I've been here, I apologize, I mean to interrupt you, um, I've seen developers that start with, you know, simple residential renovations. Then they're building single family homes, now they're building apartment complexes, taking on commercial jobs. And those small growing companies, they care about veterans, they care about Yelm, they care about low income housing. They're connected to this community. They're not the people that are just gonna fly in, stay two years, reap as much profit as they can and then move up to Puyallup and to the next town.
You know, what we need is some way that we can get, what do they call that, having a um. Representatives from those contractors in that category.
And like a vendor list of.
Able to have someone who can provide a liaison between them and. The South Sound wants to to find property and to to build.
And I've been talking with these contractors that I work with, I say, please, come to planning commission. Please come to city council, speak up and I work long hours, by the end of the day, I don't wanna go to another meeting.
Just kept. Are we allowed as planning commissioners to to do active work with that?
Avoid it. Might be walking very. A matter of fact. I would say you're walking too. I mean, you can do it, but not as a planning commissioner, if you read the guidance, which we need to educate. Anything you do in the position of planning.
I mean, there's an expert thing, I don't know, I I think it applies more to like. I I think you can do things as an individual, but if you sort of outside of a meeting as a group of two, or once you get.
But even you as an individual, if they know you're a planning commissioner and you're talking to a developer. And he thinks that might be. You're you're walking a very thin, we don't get paid like the council, but and we're selected by the mayor, but still we meet the. The commission type things that we have to be very careful in what we do as an individual or an opinion we have.
For these, these folks, is how do you get them talking to each other?
Well, the thing is, me being here right now and seeing all of this and being a part of this, when I'm out there, I can say, these changes are coming. If you wanna be a part of it, get in there and speak up.
That's a good way. And the city, you all can, that's, we use you as the tool to reach out, that's the advantage.
Can you scroll down? Um, and that's also part of the reason why we have goal uh four point two is to identify and develop partnerships with organizations. That provide or support low income workforce and senior housing, as well as any other population with unique housing needs. Um, there are a lot of organizations out there that also know developers and um and contractors and. Um, so one that comes to mind is Homes First, they specifically see a need in a community. And if they have the means and they will go after the means, um. Then they will, you know, they will happily come in and um work with the city and and get those um, those services met. Um, so there are a lot of partnerships, I think, um. Potentially, you know, four point two and four point one can piggyback off each other. Um, I will add Homes First as a recommendation such as Habitat for Humanity and Homes First. Um, just so it doesn't get lost in translation, um, but there are a lot of them available and and like Homes First, um. I don't know a lot of the other organizations, but um like Homes First does um, like. Disability needs, senior housing, um, recovery housing, things like that. And so. Um, usually if you can partnership with one, you can also ask them about others that are in the community, um. And and kind of get that list going. And once you get that list going, you will kind of, you know, usually have that camaraderie. And that dialogue with all of these partners and organizations and everything and say. You know, this is how we wanna move forward.
Just throw throwing that real quick, the the name of that organization is the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. And Gary, I sent you the link.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a feeling that is who Cody has been talking with, then if they have any specific information that we can share, I'll send it out. Thinking about or even mission statements or whatever, what did it, whatever it is they do, I just only learned about them, you know, recently.
The, there's on on their site, there's actually a land use um. Thing that they did a couple of years ago. Um, all the surrounding area for the the different types of uh income and, you know, who was looking for the housing and. And stuff like that, so there's different analysis and and reports that are out there.
All right then, is there any other questions or you wanna ask the staff?
I'm, I just have one comment. And that is, to understand our goal here today, my understanding is. We need to really digest what's been written up. And and. Comment back to be able to say, is there anything that we want to really highlight to say, yes, 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 you know, this is really important. Or um, this is a lesser one.
Would you prefer us to do it individually or as a part of a meeting?
I I would say we should make it informal. If you have comments you wanna give to me and. You know, Melissa, um, or just to me and I'll share with Melissa, however you wanna do it, um. Because, yeah, as of now, what we expect is we're gonna present you something that's very similar, if not identical to that sometime down the road. Unless we hear some objections or there are things you wanna add it.
What if we uh limit ourselves to within from now?
That would be helpful.
You have my email address.
I'm gonna give you mine. It's easier.
All right then.
I had a few things before you got to. Um, so next week, we're gonna have the regular planning committee, we think. Uh, it's different seventeen, uh, we're gonna go over some code changes, there's gonna be a public hearing. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about that. Also, um. I know you mentioned you want to do some training about uh Open Meeting Act. And I can send those to everybody uh tomorrow. And you can just attend those trainings, uh, those are online, um, and just get the certificate and send it to me, I can just. Keep that, because you're gonna have like, uh. You're gonna be very busy the next few months with the Housing Action Plan and um. The joint plan, um, and the comprehensive plan. So we may not have time to do the training um at the regular, you know, monthly meeting. So you can do it on your own time, uh, just send me the certificate that you attended.
And I urge everyone to do that, because we're required to every four years to go through that training process, so if you haven't. You really need to, uh, like you said, it's online, and apparently that you'll issue, a a certificate will be issued and. Somehow now that gets recorded to whoever needs to know.
Yeah, just send it to me, um, uh, after you attended training, they they're gonna give you a certificate, just forward them.
Thank you everyone for coming.